Okay, I'll call to order the, what is this? The August 11th meeting of the Cold Spring Planning Board. Seven o'clock. We have two members absent tonight. Member Rose and member Marion are both out. We've got member Plumson and member Sari.
Here.
Here.
Very good. So we have a light agenda, it's just the meeting minutes. Park on behalf of 2 Depot Street has come in with some information for us. Can I have a motion to add her to the agenda just to pass off some information and have a quick discussion about what she's got?
I'll make the motion.
In a second? Okay, great. Come on.
Thank you. All right. So just for your reference, I dropped off the escrow check yesterday.
Yesterday, okay, great. So we'll have to, because obviously there's a lot that we'll need to look at. There's the, you know, there's what the parking waiver is, there's going below the minimum size of a residential inhabitable unit, which is I think 600 square feet. I think you've got stuff that's a little shy of 400.
Right.
Doesn't that require a variance?
Yeah.
Yes, so that would be, is that something that the planning board reviews? Because I plan on considering that.
Planning board doesn't grant variance.
Yeah.
No.
That would require a variance. But we should look at the whole thing in totality. Then there's...
Area of coverage to it.
Lot coverage, and then there's also, it's not clear to me that we ever filed a public right-of-way on Depot Square. You know, that's privately owned road, it's actually owned by the train station.
Oh, it is.
So I don't really, I honestly don't know what that means for us, right? Because we're setting back from...
Does no village maintain it though?
Well, that's just it. If I recall, New York state law, you have to close a private road, you know, a few times a year to maintain its private status. But if it stays in continuous public use, it then becomes public use after, it's a very long time, I don't know, it's 10 years, 20 years, whatever it is. But that one's certainly been in public service. The Beating Watson survey that Karen brought in tonight actually shows, well, it's written on their public right-of-way. I don't know if that's actually been confirmed with the...
I'd have to reference the deed that's noted on here, but it's noted as a public right-of-way, so I could research it.
And then the other, the other piece that was in, the other piece that was in question was the, was the front, because I didn't know if there, how much was still on village property, because we always have the, we always have the porches and some sections of the building. But Karen says that it's shown on the deed that they purchased it from the village already.
Correct.
So that, so we'll have to send all this out to John. We just got the escrow check yesterday, so we'll establish escrow and we'll send it out to John to get his opinion. There's also then the opinion on the, on the parking waivers, which were for the B1. And while the property is in the B1, I think the intent of the waivers is pretty clear, is that they're for businesses to allow existing applications to be able to be approved. Because otherwise you couldn't, you know, you couldn't approve. Or like you said, they'd be running around looking for parking, which is really kind of a fallacy.
We used to do that.
Yeah.
We used to require applicants to do that, to find parking.
Right.
It's nonsense.
Yeah. So we'd have to get an interpretation from the village attorney on what, whether or not you could even consider those parking waivers for residential use, even though it were, I guess, mixed use. Because you have the studio as retail, as work, work-liv, right?
Yes, a combination retail apartment, basically.
Right.
Yeah, so...
But work-liv, not just retail?
No, it's correct. It would be a combination.
Yeah, okay.
Right. And evidently it was a retailer at one point, but I have no idea when.
When it was used, okay.
And the previous owner may know, but the, what I'm submitting tonight is basically an updated site plan, eight copies and eight copies of a zoning and parking worksheet. So, should I give the rest to you now?
Yeah, thanks.
So the only changes to the site plan is that I've indicated a patio that's in place that was constructed when the pool was removed, so that was done in the last few months. And then proposed pergola, which is going to be part of the ZBA application in terms of coverage and setback variance. So I just wanted to basically complete that front yard area, which was kind of vaguely noted previously. So that's the only difference to the site plan.
What is the coverage, percent of coverage? This is, is it boundary, right, of the property?
Correct, yes.
So what is the percentage of the coverage?
Do you remember? I have that in my zoning paperwork.
Oh, you did their table?
I did, yes. Oh, and I also, I assume you received a copy from Bill, but I also submitted a copy of the denial and referral with the escrow check.
Oh, very good, thanks.
Okay, so the coverage is 49.9%.
But this is pre-existing, right?
Correct.
Are you changing the footprint?
We are increasing the size of this deck slightly. I don't know the exact square footage off the top of my head. Right now, there's an existing, it's about an eight by...
Says eight, two by 12, six there, isn't it?
Right, and right now, I think it's about eight feet by seven and a half feet, so we're increasing it by about five, about 40 square feet here. And then we're adding the pergola, which will be going to the zoning board for whether or not they consider that...
Lot coverage.
For lot coverage, I don't know, but in any case, we would need a setback variance, so we'll be presenting that to the zoning board. At that time, I'll discuss whether it's going to be added to the lot coverage or just up right now. So the current lot coverage for the building, and actually, the reason it didn't increase, I have existing and proposed at 49.9%, even with the deck, because the deck actually sits over the roof of the garage. So technically, we're not increasing the lot coverage, because the garage comes back to this line. So that's included in that 49.9% as well as the shed.
So the deck is over the existing structure?
Correct. And even though the deck is increasing, it's not expanding outward of the footprint of the garage.
So you're not changing the footprint?
Correct. And I believe the allowed lot coverage is 35%.
Right, but it's a pre-existing condition.
Correct, right. We're not changing or expanding the building size.
Unless they deem the pergola. The problem with pergolas is sometimes they're considered roofs.
Right, so...
Yeah.
So we'll ask and see what they can...
Okay, very good.
Very good.
Excellent. Any questions?
Wish everybody would have prepared it.
Nice job, thank you.
Sure, and then the parking worksheet, just for reference.
Okay.
What I did was, I followed the regulations for the R3 for multifamily and added additional spaces for the square foot, square footage that would be potentially used as retail space. So that's based on the supplementary regulations for all districts.
So the 247 square feet, and then there's a balance of that same unit that's occupied, that's living space?
Right, so basically...
That's to make sure you didn't double count it.
Well, I don't know whether it would be considered double counting, but I just wanted to be as thorough as possible.
Well, this is the max.
This is the max, correct.
Right.
Yeah, so this unit is one unit that would be a living working, and this space would be intended for the retail, and that's the 247 square feet.
Okay, yeah, so you're not double counting it then?
Right.
Because you still have a studio apartment?
Correct.
With a kitchen and a bathroom and everything, it's just counted as two cars for this, and then, and then trip counts for the retail that comes in here. So it's 12 total, right?
Correct. At least that's my interpretation.
Okay, no, it sounds about right.
And again, I guess that we'll discuss further.
Yeah, we'll have to get, yeah, we'll have to get a, we'll have to get an opinion from the village attorney as to how he, it's weird, because it's zoned B1, it's not, obviously not a B1 use, it's definitely an R3, so I would think you would apply the R3, all the R3 code to it, because there's really nothing else to do, I don't think. That being said, not an attorney, so, you know, we'll ask him and say, what do you think? But typically, law is based on the reasonable man or woman, so it seems reasonable, so we'll see.
That's how I approach it, based on our last...
Okay, great.
Oh, yeah. Well, because that's what I probably knew when we, when we left, I thought we were working under that assumption.
Yeah, that assumption. So that lot is basically...
A lot of park, yeah.
Well, that's why we're here.
Yeah, right.
We've got to have the discussion and we'll just see where it goes.
Is the owner bought the property with this, with this understanding, or just with the hopes to?
Um, yeah, no, the new owner has bought the property, and I've explained to her that parking is going to be our biggest challenge. So, you know, we figured we'd approach both the zoning and planning with the wish list, and then we can drop back and plan if we need to, but we'd like to have the discussion with all the boards and see where we end up.
Okay, very good. Excellent, great, thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, so I guess there's the chance you might not be leaving in two weeks, because it's based on...
Well, we need to, we need to see if we can get a meeting together. It's not looking good, because vacations, you know, it's crunch time for vacations.
I understand, so, but that being said, we have everything in now, so we definitely do have the agenda for...
We'll definitely put you on the next agenda, yeah. We'll definitely put you on the next agenda. We'll get the, obviously with the check-in, so we can, I'll send an email tonight, tell the attorney to set up an escrow matter.
Okay.
And to the treasurer as well, and then I'll send the application and all this supporting documentation over to him.
Okay.
And then ask him, and then I'll send up just a list of our questions, and I'm sure he's going to have his own, and then he'll be ready then for the, you know, for that meeting. We're going to see if we can do a special one. I don't, if we had a special one, it definitely wouldn't be in time for that, because we're trying to do one on a week from today.
Right.
Because the Butterfield project that is looking for an answer on a question, that we're trying to expedite for them, but we're having trouble getting, you know, not, we have a quorum, well, maybe we have a quorum, but we're trying to get a full board, because it's an existing. So then if that were the case, we probably wouldn't have a meeting the following week.
Right, okay. So just in terms of kind of moving things forward, if we're going to be filling out the long form EAF, should I complete that and submit that prior to our next meeting, or?
Yeah, I think it's fine, yeah.
Okay.
I think it's definitely a type 1, it's in the historic district, it's impactful, it's, you know, it's all...
Okay. And then that would be reviewed at that next meeting, or you review that on your own, depending on who the lead agency is?
Probably what we'll do is we'll add, we'll be, we'll declare lead.
Okay.
Because the HTRB is not really doing much.
Yeah, they've already called it a type 2, but I didn't know if the ZBA would, so it would be you or the ZBA would be the lead agency.
Right, right.
Okay.
And we've kind of, we've had a meeting of the board chairs a couple of times, and said that in most cases, if the planning board is involved, we'll lead in almost all cases, and so that would definitely be the case here. Because it, the biggest, the biggest impacts are parking and, you know, and the, you know, and while the variance is sit with the ZBA, the use, you know, is here, and so it's a, it's a fairly significant change of use with mixed use and increasing the density and so...
Okay.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Is this yours?
Oh, thank you, yes.
Okay, so we've looked through the minutes. I guess I shall jump back in agenda. Regroup here.
I got a couple comments on the June 10 minutes, but I don't have any on the other day.
Okay. Okay, so...
P and Q.
June 10?
Yep, June 10. I think they're errors.
Okay.
Section 6, Q, right?
Yeah, I got that too.
P says non-conforming, and there is no provision in the code for non-conforming parking spots, so I...
I think what he's talking, we could either strike it, or we could just say what I believe he said, which is obviously a 20% waiver.
But it's non-conforming, it'd be 20% waiver on conforming.
Right.
The conversation was that there was, what was, we got our number with the non-conforming spots, and the conforming spots got us to the waiver.
Yeah, but the planning board cannot accept non-conforming spots, so what we did is we accepted 20% of conforming.
Yeah, they're not spots, they're just not spots to us, yeah.
I'm sorry?
They're just not spots to us, we can't count them, yes.
Right, exactly. But in the back of your mind, you did the same thing I did.
Yeah, we did.
It made me more comfortable, knowing that a lot of people drive compacts, that we have these additional spots, and it's a factor, but we can't officially count.
Right, okay.
Unless what he meant was, if you give a 20% waiver, is he saying that that 20% could be made up with non, I don't think that's, I don't think that's what he, I don't think First would have said that.
No, no.
Should we just strike it? And we can go back to the video, I don't know that's all that critical.
I don't think it's important.
I think, well, let's just strike it, because I don't want to, I don't want to figure out what he said, and we also, luckily, we also have the recordings, which are great.
Well, you have it here, no, but yeah, but R clears it up. First said that with a 20% waiver, there would be 211 conforming spaces, and then that's what pulls us in with our 21 non-conforming, that makes it, because we went off of total space in the end, we said, how many are there actually?
Right, but officially, we can't do that. I mean, the only, the ZBA could say, you know, we accept non-conforming spaces.
The statement as written is, it cannot happen, it can't be, because, and First certainly can't say that, which is that we can, that any of the parking can be, look, any of the parking can be non-conforming, but there's certainly no percentage, because we're not counting non-conforming anyway, because as far as we're concerned, it's not a space.
Right.
Right? Because a space is only something that's...
But it helped us push to the 20% instead of the 11.
Well, that is true, but officially, we can't count it.
Right, okay.
In my mind, the, I did not vote for the original site plan, which was based on 11.5.
Right.
Because I felt that there was inadequate parking due to both the Leahy Pavilion and the one space per senior parking.
Right.
I thought we was heading for a problem, but what we have now, what the difference we have now, and the reason I voted for it, that first of all, we have assigned spaces for the medical center, something like 10 or 11 spaces. Secondly, there are all these spaces underneath the senior center, or the senior housing, which will be used by senior housing. But more importantly, is the busing. The busing guarantees that every senior can get here.
Yeah.
You know, to me, that was a huge factor. And then, and knowing that there is these 21 spots that we're not counting, that are there, you know, is a factor in my mind too. But officially, you can't say that that conforms to the code, because it doesn't.
Right. Right, but now there's not even a senior center.
I'm sorry?
Well, we don't know that yet. I mean, you know, we've read that in the papers, who knows? Yeah.
Yeah, it was a very interesting article, I'm sure you saw it in the latest PCNR.
It made absolutely no sense, and didn't follow fact, to be honest, I mean...
Well, there was two articles, one of them there quoted the Ales. I don't know if you see the second one.
Yeah, I did, yeah. Oh, about, yeah, about the bait switch and all, yeah. Well, it's also, it's interesting, I went through the meeting minutes too, and the story as to what all the switching actually happens is clear in those meeting minutes, and it's not what we were told in here. So it's, I went through them only to understand if the lease was signed, because I can't, I couldn't get an answer as to whether or not the lease was signed. I thought the lease was signed back in May, I thought that's what someone had said, from one of the, from one of the committees or the ledge, but, anyway, so, anyway, that's just what's reported, hopefully they'll pull it together, but...
And I think there's a problem with Q as well, because Marion said that based upon his understanding of non-conforming spaces, there would be a shortfall of nine spaces. I don't think it should be non-conforming.
But where, where are you?
Q, right after, after the next one down. Because there is no non-conforming spaces in the code, there's no such animal.
Right, but, but we worked off of the understanding that they existed, that they exist, whether or not they're in the code or not, that they're on the, that they're on the plan, they exist and people would park there.
But the shortfall would only be based on conforming spaces, not non-conforming.
Right, so I'm not sure what he meant. I think that you're suggesting that he, he was counting them to see how many shortfalls he'd have if he counted them?
Yeah, off the total. Because what, because what we were doing, and I was writing it up next to Dave, I had my little...
Yeah, you and Dave were working together on this one, yeah.
Yeah, and we were, we were going off of what was a total space, what were the total spaces, just to be able to move us forward, because we were locked in this, you know, intensity question and too few spaces.
So you think this is correct as written?
I, I think it is, I mean, so based upon his understanding, non-conforming spaces, there would be a shortfall of nine spaces, if you're...
Yeah, they may not be connected. They're not, they may not be connected, those two, those two thoughts, and it sounds like they're not.
Does remember...
I mean, you, you were having the discussion with him.
Yeah.
If it makes sense to, it's not clear here, but that's fine if it's not clear, as long as it's accurate.
So, yeah, because Dave, Dave was talking about, well, we were talking about restriving and saying, well, what if you made them a little bit, you know, slightly narrower?
But we can't do that.
No, but that was the, but those were the, that was in the conversation, that's why he's saying, he's pressed confident that this could be made up if the size of conforming spaces were reduced, right? That makes sense, because he was talking about that. And the board has added its limit for the number of conforming spaces, leaving use of non-conforming in reduction of landscaping as a means to get to a number the board is comfortable with. See, leaving use of non-conforming spaces and reduction. So, right, that's where John came in, he said, well, if you have the non-conforming spaces, you may be reduce landscaping, and then I think, and then I think Judith said, no, I like the trees, and I like the little, the little island.
Galero liked the island, yeah.
Yeah, right, the little islands, you know, and he said, well, let's not get rid of those, so, I mean, I think I'm, I think I'm remembering that correctly.
Okay. I think that's fine, I believe, I think P, we should just strike, only because it creates a fact statement that isn't really, that's not correct.
Okay, fine, okay.
Anything else?
I didn't have anything.
I've got a little bit on that one, so obviously, we're filling in the blanks.
Right.
It's public assembly on the first page. Item I is...
Where are you? What page were we at, public assembly, or?
No, that, just on the first page, the bottom sentence on the first page.
Oh.
Place of assembly.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Just to assert public. Limiting parking for 55, for over 55 houses, bikini parking spaces is discussed. I think what that, I think what that discussion was, was limiting parking in the, in the shared parking area, obviously not under, because obviously, that's where we're, that's what we're talking about, is that we, we're concerned what flows out from that, those condominiums. The condominiums have a one-to-one, assuming that...
Right.
You can match the compact cars and the KDA units up to the unit owners, right? I'm not sure how you do that, and make sure you really have a one-for-one when you buy the unit. Typically, you buy a unit, you have a space underneath, but there's quite a bit of restricted parking in there, compact and ADA.
Well, they're going to have an association, and association can dangle incentives out there, you know, if you're getting this unit and you're willing to take a compact spot with it, you know, you know, they get...
So that will, I think we have to leave it, just number 8A, I just went, just a copy of the post office maneuverability study, which we never received.
Never heard of?
No.
You never got?
No. We asked quite a bit, but... Otherwise, I think that looks good. May, May 12th looks good, the only thing is, I don't, we'd have to go back to the tape to figure who... Michael, was it not clear on the tape who seconded the motion? Is that why it's blank? Oh, so you couldn't even tell from the tape?
No.
We may just have to leave it blank then. I mean, if we don't have it, we don't have it.
Yeah, you can't fill in those names.
Sometimes things are going so fast and furious, I can't...
Yeah, and if you can't, you couldn't tell from the tape, right?
No.
Okay, well, you know, if you can't tell, you can't tell, I thought maybe that was our last resort, but if that's already done, what do we got then? July 28? From the last meeting, the board has not received the hard copy amended site plan. We had received the electronic version, but we didn't get hard copy.
But where are you on June 28?
June 28, the last meeting.
July 28.
I'm sorry, July 28, I'm sorry.
Okay.
The last meeting, right? Now, it's the other thing, it looks good. And the only other thing, the last, the last item, board member commented, board members commented that the existing parking for two small cars in the garage and two cars in the driveway may be insufficient to meet code. I don't imagine we would say that for, we must have said is insufficient to meet code, right? It was when parks was, we were discussing, it's not really that critical.
No.
But I, I don't think any of us would think that two and a half cars is enough for three units, much less five.
Yeah, I, I think, instead of maybe insufficient, is that it is insufficient.
That's what I changed it to, yeah, that's what I changed it to, okay, so we'll change that as amended. The June 23rd, this is the big one. Wait, one, two. It's not that long, actually.
Okay, June 10th, let's technically do it.
All right, so the June 23rd...
No, June 23rd is actually worth getting done.
Just for site plan review, board members reviewed the revised site plan, mod 3 consensus is that 200 conforming parking spaces meet code requirements. I just want to add that with a full, with the full 20% waiver, because it suggests the 213 meets code, it doesn't meet code, it meets it with the waiver.
No, yeah. Yeah, because a mass is a huge waiver.
Yeah, we also need to add the discussion that John First confirmed that the, that the board wanted a copy of the lease guaranteeing the busing, because that was, that was without question the most pivotal condition. Obviously, the rest of it were more administrative and clerical and more timing.
Yeah.
But obviously, what the, what clearly what moved the board was that busing would reduce the trip counts, which would reduce the cars coming to the site, which might make it work.
It shouldn't be a big deal anyway for them to do, considering they walked in here and said, we do that anyway, we can do this, no problem.
They don't do that, they, they offer busing, yes. I don't know that they are set up to do 100% busing.
Yeah.
Right?
Walker said he didn't, he was sitting over there, might have said it, maybe you're right.
There's discussion in physical services.
Yeah.
The physical services committee, but that's not quite what they do.
Yeah, well, it's good to know.
So we'll see what they, what they ultimately end up doing. Obviously, that's why we need the lease, because the lease basically just needs to say, what we said in there, what I also added in here is that, I think it's important too, that they were here, so under 6D3, I added Chairman Francisco confirmed with Deputy County Executive Walker.
There you go.
And legislators Albano and Scuichamaro, in attendance, that Physical Services Committee voted and agreed to a change to the lease, including a binding clause to this effect. They were confident the lease would be executed within one month's time.
Yeah, wow.
Exactly, kind of a harbinger. And then, so then there was the discussion, like I said, that John said, do we still want the lease, and John also said, do we want to condition it on issuance or filing, right? And we had, we had all agreed as a board to give him the extra time for, for filing. He can actually go to bill, start filing for all these build outs, whether the tenant-proved build outs or parking changes or whatever. Get all the way ready up to permits, wherever he needs a permit, whether it's a permit for two, a permit for Leahy, a permit for, you know, parking or moving some things around. And so John had suggested, so when we had discussed, I said, I think we should give him on issuance. Because that way then, it gives him the most time to get ready, as opposed to waiting for meeting all the conditions. One of the largest conditions being the county lease, which obviously, it, it, there was a reason we made it a condition, and obviously, luckily, we did, because it's, it's questionable at this point, and hopefully, it's just a delay, but the developer is obviously very concerned about that delay. So, we want to make sure, obviously, that the minutes correctly reflect the meeting. I went through the tape, and I went through the video, my audio tape, and I went through the video as well. And there was a lengthy discussion about, between John and myself, and then with the applicant, about getting a copy of the lease, and then making, John asked him, he said, well, when will you be ready to pull permits? And he said, not for, you know, not for a little while, so the, you know, there was enough time actually for issuance. So we conditioned the, we conditioned the, the resolution on the issuance of the permits, to get all the conditions met for the issuance of permits. That's obviously what's, what's become an issue now, the request for the permits and the-
Yeah, but the purpose of the whole meeting was to get him to through the process to meet these things, so he would be, you know.
So we just put these in order, and then we can just make a motion to accept them as amended. Okay, can I have a motion to accept the May 26th, the June 10th, the June 23rd, and the July 28th meeting minutes as amended?
What were the last two? I'm sorry, May 26th, June 10th?
May 12th. I'm sorry, yeah, you're, yeah, May 26th, May 12th, sorry, that's right of order. June 10th, June 23rd, and July 28th.
I'll make the motion.
Do I second?
Second.
Great. On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We'll adopt the minute says, and I'll send these over to you, Michael. I'll just, I'll type them up actually, because I just have my scribble all over them now.
Whatever works for you.
Very good. Are there any reports of the members?
No.
No?
Well, I do have one. The, and I had mentioned this before, the school has put in 25, 25 parking spots.
Yeah, we caught that in the meeting minutes. Yeah, I believe no jurisdiction over, right? And have we noticed, have you noticed anything as far as parking around the house? I guess, well, they're out, so it's hard to tell.
Yeah, they're out, but I know that the village worked with the school, the parking committee worked with the school on increasing onsite parking.
Is that mostly for students or teachers, or both?
Well, I believe the only parking they had before for students were 9D, and they had 30 spaces. And the kids wouldn't park there, and the school wouldn't enforce it. The school kind of, you know, left it up to the parents, so to speak.
Yeah.
But, well, what was taking place is that, as you know, Orchard Street, Mountain Avenue, you know, have become the parking for the school.
Yeah, it always get blocked in during a drop-off.
John O'Neills said that, or well, his wife, said that he got hit walking a baby.
I'd been expecting, you know, an accident between students driving and the student walking, because probably 40%.
Pretty congested.
Forty percent of the kids probably walk to school, they walk to school, use that entranceway.
Yeah.
And then you have both the EMS and the buses come out the, come out that entranceway. And the parents were dropping the kids off and picking the kids up there. Now, we've been there for almost 40 years, and the change took place when they put the new high school in, they changed the routing of the traffic. Without consulting the village. I mean, the school is a stand-along entity. They do whatever they want. So they, they put the new high school in, which was great, but they changed the, the routing of traffic. So I mean, I've complained several times to various administrations, so that they need to provide more parking onsite, but just recently.
They also need signage in crosswalks too, I think, in that area.
Yeah.
It's a little dangerous.
It is.
But, I mean, Cuomo just put out like, what was it, like $200 million grant for crosswalks?
Does that mean?
Yeah, I think so. But it's nothing but, and new signage, new crosswalks, so it's something we can't put the money in for.
Well, I, I think it's great if they, if they've got 20 or 25 new spots onsite up by the high school, and they make the kids use them.
Right.
But anyhow, that's all I have.
All right, Ezra?
No, no, that, that hit one of my ideas, so.
Very good. There's no correspondence to any public comment?
Nope.
Okay. Board business, I think the only thing we have is we've got, obviously, we've got Two Stone Street that we'll send out to the attorney, and see if we can get that ready. We've got to figure out how to schedule a meeting. As we know, Butterfield's requesting to be placed on the agenda to talk about figuring out how to work around their conditions, because they're, they're not able to meet their conditions.
Yeah.
But yet, they want to keep the work going, so we obviously were careful about how that was done, because obviously, that's our job, and we're also sensitive to what their time schedule were, was, and what, you know, what we had talked about was, and what we did was what they asked us to do. But that doesn't work for them now. There was a sense that the county was gonna quickly execute the lease, and, and that didn't, and that didn't happen. And so we'll see, so we'll have to figure out how we can get a meeting together. There are a few options. There's a modification of conditions, right? There's a request to modify conditions. There's a, you know, there's a, there's a separate, you know, you would do an amended, another amended site plan that shows different uses or alternate uses.
Yeah, he's already put three together though, hasn't he? Two or three? He's had two or three amended site plans that have come to the board.
No, I mean, this is just the second one. I mean, the-
This was number two.
Yeah. Yeah, just he has his approved one, and now this, this amended one.
Okay.
There was versions that we went through when we weren't really talking. Not that we weren't talking, we weren't really reviewing.
Right.
Right? It was basically just, it was a discussion about our legal counsel and their interpretation
Shouted at by us.
Of our legal counsels. We didn't really do any review until, I think, what was it, May 10th or something like that?
June.
You know, where we got, where we got the first parking table, and then said, okay, here's what we have, here's how we move forward, and then, and then, and then got it done in three meetings, so that's what we'll, we'll have to figure out what our options to. I sent one option out to John today as a possibility, but we'll have to, as a board, we'll have to, I'll get his feedback on that, and if he says I can circulate it, I'll circulate that.
Why can't he just work on the other building? Is it because the, because the medical is moving the building too? He can't?
It, it ignores the way approvals are done, right? You have the, that everything is tied, right? The, the, you, you meet the conditions, and then you proceed with that work, right?
Right.
And so we all know what, what that review was, which is that this will change to public assembly and office, right, over at Leahy. This, the medical, the, the grandfathered, or whatever we're gonna call those 35 spaces for medical use, will be shifted over to 11,500 square feet of building number two, and that use goes in there. Now, the, the challenge is, if, you know, first of all, we have a resolution that says you can't issue a permit until the conditions are met. We'd be in violation of our own resolution for, that's the first answer.
Okay.
Right? The second answer is that you have to consider the scenario, that if the conditions cannot be met, then what's the remedy? You've now allowed the change to start happening.
Right.
And you haven't met the conditions of the approved site plan.
Sure.
And as, as work progresses, what happens is a developer's rights vest. So boards have a lot more authority and leeway if the work hasn't been undertaken or isn't substantially complete, right? So as you let work continue to go on, and let work get closer and closer to substantial completion, you then kind of are holding hand with the developer.
Right, your own, at some level.
Yeah.
I got you.
So that's really not our job. Our job is to protect the village's interests, which is, this board as a whole said very clearly, the only thing that moved us to this 20% waiver was busing, right?
Actually, there's several factors.
No, it was, it was more than that. It was-
The medical parking was another factor.
Well, I think those are enhancements to the, to the effect on the site, right? That if you do come to use the medical facility, at least you're assured some parking. How that gets enforced, who knows, but it's, it's, it's an attempt to make it better.
I buy the idea that it's all, it's all together as a package. I mean, I get that, you know. And it wasn't the resolution that these, these are the things that should be met, so I, I get that. I mean, what moved it was the, for me, was all those things together.
Right.
You know, really, because that's, it's hard to pull one out without having the other, you know, I like.
Well, without question, what we're talking about is cars, and where did the cars go, right?
So, all, all of that was, was kind of together, so.
When this whole project is done, I believe that there's gonna be inadequate parking.
Yeah, but that's from the density of the buildings already approved.
I'm sorry?
I think that's from the density from the buildings already approved. There, there'd be adequate parking if Leahy didn't exist.
Would there be?
I think so. I think it's from the density of the, of the site.
Right, is that opinion? I guess that's opinion.
Yeah, but going back to what I-
No, no, it was approved at 35, and code would calculate it at 72, so you start out short.
Correct.
Well, I, I believe myself that there'll be inadequate parking when it's done, but the problem is, is that a prior board approved the overall site. And now what the applicant came in was to make limited changes, and that's all we could address was the limited changes. But in that process, we did get 11, I think, 11 parking spots for medical. And we also got busing for the senior citizens.
Four more spaces added on.
Four more spaces.
Yeah.
Okay, and, and so we, to, in my way of thinking, the, the modified plan is better than the original plan, because of these features.
Right.
But still, you're gonna have a shortage, I think, when it comes to retail, but we couldn't address that.
Right.
Because he, he did not ask for changes.
No, because the site was, that's what I'm saying. Site was already approved.
That's right.
You know, you already went down. You can't address these buildings that have already been approved and everything like that, so.
But the biggest mitigating factor, well, well, I, I agree, we definitely improved the, the user experience on the site, right? Because of signage, because of reserved medical parking, and then, but the big, but the big game changer is really the busing, right? Because if, if 64 cars, right, pull in, you know, they, you know, they, they're gonna have seating for 64, but let's say 30, 40 cars pull in.
Yeah, well, and even the, even the change of the building was designed for the busing. That was one of the reasons, because they talked about it being, what, more on grade, right, was the idea?
I think that was one of them, yeah.
That was one of the ideas. They said, well, you can't have a bus going up this way in the winter, and yada, 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 you know, it's going up too high, so all right, so we switch it out.
So that's where, so that's where our, so we'll have to, we'll have to discuss that the next meeting. You're out of town on the 25th. Are you available?
No, I'm gone from-
Oh, you're out of town next week.
For the 25th.
You're out of town next week, okay, right?
I'm out of town the 25th. I won't be here the-
You're out of town the 25th. We've got Judith out next week. I'm not sure about the 25th, so we'll have to-
The 18th? I mean, I can make the 18th, but if you don't have a stacked board, I don't know.
Well, I think it, I'm not sure that we should, because it's action that the, that the full board took, right, the resolution, I don't think that a partial board should be discussing, you know, such a large matter, and talking about possibly touching, you know, an adopted resolution.
Well, plus-
Would you agree on it?
Plus, we're supposed to pick up the pieces of, off of what happened at the, you know, at the county level? I mean, now they throw it on our lap right away? I mean, that's, that's the way I feel about it right now. Oh, like hurry up and, and get this through, even though it fell through with the county.
Yeah, so we'll have to, we, so, yeah, so that, that'd be the point of the meeting, is really to look at options, because obviously, our, this board's intention is not to hold up anybody, where our intention is only to enforce the code. One of the, you know, one of the things we have before us is a resolution that says you can't issue permits until all the conditions are met, right? There's a reason you do that, because you don't want, you don't want development and work to proceed ahead of the approvals, right? Because then, what's your path back, right?
You don't have- Well, we were trying to get them to work as fast as they could, but the whole idea was, you know, and David mentioned it, it's in the minutes, you know, if we make an, an error, and we even joked with Steve Barshau in the room, you know, so all of a sudden, Steve's gonna think about suing the board, you know, suing, suing the town, suing the planning board for making this error that got somebody hurt or killed on the site, you know, because of the inadequate parking, because of the density.
Of the circulation.
Yeah, because of the circulation, because we screwed up. I think it's a valid point.
Yes, we're, so we're stuck with the resolution we have, as is the developer. We'll have to figure out what kind of path forward we have as a board, but I think it should be, you know, at least, at least the members that put the resolution forward, right? I think it was everybody but Dave, right? But I don't, I don't think we should be talking about, you know, modifying the conditions of a resolution with a different configuration. My preference would be the full board.
I agree.
And August is a very difficult month, which is obviously why you guys took it off.
Shut down and all.
Yeah, I mean, every, it's, you know, it's crunch time, and that's what we're doing. I mean, we couldn't schedule anything, but now Joe got a job, so we're gonna jam a vacation if we're school starts.
Yeah, sure.
So, that's just kind of what you do in August. Yeah?
Oh, yeah.
The Bronx, he's gonna teach third grade.
Oh, yeah, where, where in the Bronx? Sorry, sorry.
Uh, oh, God, what do they call that area? It's a 7S. It's 113th Street. No, wait, 113th Street was Harlem. That was Harlem. I don't know, let me check.
That was over at Ellen.
Oh, you were?
Yeah, we taught at Christopher Columbus.
He said he thought it was Soundview? It's PS 195, I know that. He said he thought the area of the Bronx may be Soundview. I know it's over by the, by the Bruckner.
Oh, okay.
By where the Bruckner comes off of 278, by the, by the RFK. Gets back in there, yeah, because he really wants to teach a diverse population, so, and he's excited. So anyway, so we're gonna, it was, you know, because you know how it is when open market is. I just, I said, you can't, I'm scheduling anything. Waiting for people to call. So now he's done waiting for, possibly, we're gonna jam on it, so. We have anything else? Got a motion to adjourn? Great, for a second?
Second. All right.
Thanks.
Thank you, Matt.